Everyone and welcome to the Charlton Select Board Meeting. Today is June 10th, 2025. It is 6:30. We're at the Town Hall, Meeting Room 1 in 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass. Just a note that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by Charlton Cable Access TV on Spectrum TV, Channel 191, and recording available on the YouTube channel for Charlton TV. Any member of the public who wishes to record a meeting must first notify the Chair. Thank you. All right, we call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda would be announcements. Vasha.
It is the responsibility of the Assessors' Office to measure properties every 10 years in addition to visiting sales, permits, and abatements. This is in accordance with the standard set by the Department of Revenue. The Director of Assessing, Kathleen Stanley, as well as Kelsey Santa, our assessing technician, will be conducting these inspections. We are required to supply the DOR with a report indicating we have visited each property at least once in the past 10 years, as they certify our tax rate annually. If you prefer, we do not come, please call the Assessors' Office. The number is 508-248-2233 to make other arrangements. More information is available on our website. It is the goal of the Assessors' Office to be fair in evaluating your home or business. We appreciate your cooperation and kindness in our efforts to provide fair and equitable assessments.
That's that.
Farmers Market on the Common is every Wednesday. That's May 28th, already started, and it runs until August 27th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. The Flag Day is on June 14th, Flag Burning Ceremony at 5:00 p.m. on the Town Common. The Town Hall will be closed on June 19th for the Juneteenth observance. The Town Clerk's Office is looking for a very old record book that was taken from the office in the 1990s. The book would be titled Town Records: Town of Charlton, and the dates would be between October 1856 and March 1893. If you do find it, if you know what it could be, please contact the office at 508-248-2249. Exciting news, groundbreaking ceremony of the construction of the new fire station for Oxford Road. It's on Wednesday, June 18th at 4:00 p.m. There's also an opening for a Council on Engine Kitchen Coordinator position. That's for 19 hours a week. If interested, please visit the town's website, Human Resource Page. And what is going on at the library? A concert with Far From Eden will be held on Thursday, June 26th. That's at 6:00 p.m. And summer reading starts on Monday, June 23rd. Everybody's inviting to sign up, read books, and win back. That's what I got.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on, we'll now go to open forum. If anyone's here that would like to speak, now would be the time. Please come forward and state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Jean Costello, and I'm at 34 Main Street. I'm also a proud member of the Dudley-Charlton Regional School Committee, and I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen in response to a personal attack made during the open forum segment on May 27th Select Board Meeting by Board Member David Singer. At that meeting, Mr. Singer stepped down from the dais and, speaking as a private citizen, accused me by name of being pro-Hamas, anti-Semitic, and of spreading hate. These accusations are entirely false and defamatory. Let me state this clearly and unequivocally. I condemn terrorism, anti-Semitism, and hate in all forms. These are not political talking points for me. They are deeply held moral convictions. Mr. Singer spoke that evening about the importance of taking a stand, and on that I agree. I stand for free speech. I may not always agree with what others say, but I will always defend their right to say it. The principle is fundamental, especially in emotionally charged times when it's easier to attack than to understand, and easier to label than to listen. But free speech does not mean freedom from accountability. When false and inflammatory accusations are made, particularly by someone in position of public trust, they cannot go unchallenged. These words do real harm, not only to individuals, but to the integrity of our civic institutions and to the trust we must maintain as a community. A few years ago, I respectfully requested that the town consider adopting the provisions of Massachusetts General Law to establish a Disability Commission, a body that would help address accessibility and inclusion in Charlton. In that discussion, Mr. Singer expressed concern that we do not have enough residents stepping forward to serve on boards or run for office. I share that concern, but it raises the question, how does attacking a resident who has already gone through the process, gathering signatures, being on the ballot, and serving in elected office encourage more civic participation? If anything, it discourages it. We should be doing everything we can to empower people to get involved, not create a culture of fear and hostility around public service. Tonight, I call on the Charlton Select Board to reaffirm its commitment to civil discourse and to hold all of its members to a standard that reflects the dignity of public service. I also call on Mr. Singer to publicly retract his false statements. One hopeful outcome of this incident is the reminder that we are proudly a No Place For Hate community, and that Mr. Singer is a vocal supporter of DEI principles. I share that commitment wholeheartedly. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion means rejecting all forms of hate, whether it's anti-Semitism, racism, sexism, classism, xenophobia, ableism, or any harmful stereotype or bias. I hope and expect that Mr. Singer will continue to be a strong voice in promoting DEI values that benefit all members of our Charlton community. I feel it's important to note that in the three months in which Mr. Singer has publicly taken issue with my private social media, he has never once reached out to me directly to express his concerns or ask for clarification. As public officials, we have a responsibility to model respectful dialogue, especially when disagreements arise. Had Mr. Singer approached me in good faith, I would have welcomed a conversation. Instead, he chose to raise serious and damaging accusations in a public forum without ever attempting to speak with me personally, and that choice speaks volumes. I will not be intimidated or silenced, and I remain committed to doing the work I was elected to do, listening to the residents, advocating for our students, and upholding the values of integrity, inclusion, and mutual respect. I'd also like to address the other serious allegations made by Mr. Singer during the May 27th meeting, including claims that Jewish students in our community have been harassed or threatened, and that someone allegedly made a comment on a school bus about vandalizing a student's home. If these incidents did occur, they are deeply concerning, but such matters must be brought to the appropriate authorities, school administrators, principals, or law enforcement, so they can be properly investigated and addressed. Using vague or unverified claims in a public meeting without ensuring these students and families receive support or protection does not help victims. It politicizes their pain. Our focus should be on ensuring a safe environment for all students and our community. That means reporting incidents responsibly and following due process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costello. I did want to point out that later on on the agenda, under Action Item Number 5, we will be discussing this, just as an FYI.
So Madam Chair, I don't get to respond to the false accusations that were just made?
Not till we get to Mr. Singer and David. When we get down to Action Item Number 5, which may be moved up, let's see how the meeting proceeds.
Fine, I'll correct the false accusations.
Well, we're gonna move on. Is there anyone else here for open forum? Come on in. Please state your name and your address. Welcome.
I'm Megan at One Fairview Ave. in Dudley. I'm with MC Designs and representing the Charlton Business Alliance. We just wanted to notify everybody of a mixer we're having at Quarter Keg on June 17th from 6:00 to 8:00. Anyone is welcome to come. It's $5 if you're a member and $10 non-member, so we hope to see everyone there.
All right. Well, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for open forum? All right. We shall move on. We are now under Number 2, Approval of Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of our regularly scheduled meeting held on May 27th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next item would be under Number 3, Appointment and Resignation. First one is Board Deliberation and Vote on Appointments. The local inspector, Justin Blaisdell. Would you like to take this?
Yes. Three applications were received for the local inspector position. Interviews were conducted with two of the applicants. The board was asked to sign a signatory appointment for Justin Blaisdell for this position in order to allow sufficient time for onboard. This appointment is for a provisional local inspector, which would give him one year to obtain his local inspector certification. Tonight, you are asked to confirm the appointment. Mr. Neskis and Mr. Blaisdell are here for you today.
All right, well, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. Is there anything you'd like to say before we?
So as Mr. Gola said, we had several applicants. We interviewed two. Minimum qualification to even be considered is that you have construction experience and a construction supervisor's license, which Mr. Blaisdell has. And after our HR Director Lynn and I interviewed Mr. Blaisdell and the other candidate, it was very clear that he has the temperament and is trainable and has the ability to eventually fill my shoes and has just told me before that he'll stick it out as long as I stick it out, so. I hope to mentor him into taking over this position sometime in the next three to five years. I'm, you know, waiting to finish the fire station for sure in my term, and I'm trying to get a position on a board that has a five-year appointment that if I get that appointment, I will at least be staying another five years. I still enjoy my job, and I hope that joy goes over to Mr. Blaisdell, and I hope the Selectmen and I know the Town Hall will welcome him with open arms and into our happy family. And that's one of the things that Justin asked for in his interview was, is that one of the reasons he was looking to change employment was, is for the team atmosphere that the Town of Charlton has.
Okay. Motion to? Justin, you live in Charlton?
I live in Spencer.
Spencer?
Yep.
All right. Any questions for comments on the board?
That's the part-time position. Mr. Curtis.
Excuse me?
This is part-time position.
No, this is a full-time position, and our past two inspectors have been full-time, so there's no change in that status.
Can I have a motion to confirm the appointment?
To confirm the appointment.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second to confirm the appointment. Do we have any discussion?
Welcome.
Welcome. Wait a minute. Not official yet. It's not official. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Andrew.
All right, next we have an appointment for the Activities Council for Ray Mancini and Richard Watts. Attached are two Town Bank forms received from Ray Mancini and Richard Watts seeking to be appointed to the Activities Council. Currently, there are two full member openings and two alternate member openings. I recommend the board appoint both as full members. Mr. Mancini with a term expiration date of June 30th, 2026, and Mr. Watts with a term expiration of June 30th, 2027.
Do I have a so moved?
Yep. I move the board to appoint both as full members. Mr. Mancini with a term expiration date of June 30th, 2026, and Mr. Watts with a term expiration of June 30th, 2027.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
David, did you vote?
Mm-hmm.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Andrew?
Next, we have an appointment for per diem dispatcher. Police Chief Dow is asking the board to appoint Megan Campbell as per diem dispatcher. I recommend the board make the appointment.
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to make the appointment. Any conversation? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. It's unanimous.
All right, and finally, we have the reappointments for terms expiring June 30th, 2025. Attached is a list of reappointments for the board's consideration for committees appointed by the board for terms that will be expiring by June 30th, 2025. The new expiration date for each appointment is listed as well. For those not seeking reappointment, letters thanking them for their service to the town are in your sign folder. I'd recommend the board make the reappointments as outlined on the list.
I make a motion, we just do them all at one time? Rather than go through them line by line?
So all the ones that are reappointing?
Excluding the ones that don't want, yeah.
Didn't want it, yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The passes. It's unanimous. Thank you. And I think we're on time. We've got time for the, all right.
All right, 6:45 appointment. We have the appointment of Sergeant Timothy Smith and to recognize recently appointed Anthony Grivens as lieutenant and Jason White as sergeant. The board is asked to, is being asked to promote Timothy Smith to the rank of sergeant effective July 13th, 2025. Mr. Smith has been with the town since 1997, serving as police officer and firearms instructor. I would recommend the board approve the request. And at the board's April 8th, 2025 meeting, the following were also appointed, Police Lieutenant Anthony Grivens, effective that same day, July 13th, 2025, and Sergeant Jason White, also effective July 13th, 2025. I would like to formally recognize these officers on their appointments as well. Can start up, everybody?
Yeah, we will move to recognize these officers on their appointments.
Second. If we can save a second.
You guys still need to appoint them. Yep. Yep.
So we had?
You do need to make a motion for officers to sergeant.
Yeah, motion to appoint.
Yeah, I moved to, yeah. I moved to appoint Mr. Timothy Smith to a sergeant.
Second.
All right. Did you want to say anything before we vote?
Now, thank you very much for this opportunity. It's my pleasure to serve this town, and I'll continue to serve it as I have for the last 28 years. Thank you.
Any discussion by the board members?
All I've got to say is, you totally deserve it. Job well done. Thank you. You totally deserve it.
If I could add anything to this, it would be to now Sergeant Smith, White, and Lieutenant Grivens, all of you, and the community at large. So, yes, it's a point of pride, Charlton PD. It really is the finest, and I think not only in the Commonwealth, but in just period. Our first responders are the best, and our police department is just head and shoulders. Every member, these gentlemen and their promotions, they are very well-deserved, and this town cannot be in better hands than it is with the people in this room right now and the officers here and the rest of that department. Thank you for everything you guys do.
All right, you don't.
All right.
And now we'll vote, make it official. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congrats.
All right, yeah.
Did you want to say anything else about the other two?
Yeah. I know we wanted to do that. I knew we wanted to do the appointment out first. So Detective White was promoted to sergeant. She's got his bachelor's degree, he's been a great asset to the department. Anthony Grivens has been a sergeant previously and got promoted with retirement to keep the lieutenant. I kind of pushed their promotional process through, hoping just to get a placehold, not know what the future's gonna hold, but it worked out well, and they got promoted earlier, but I didn't want them to not have their families here to have some recognition and acknowledgement.
Absolutely well-deserved.
Anyone want to say J or N?
Did you want her? Did you?
You guys want to do pictures?
Everybody wants to take a picture?
It's up to you.
Both of you. Yep, no? With the families? I know, really. We can take a picture of you. It's, we're not forcing.
Get your pictures together, with your families.
Yeah, shake their hands, I think, huh? Yeah.
They don't got to see you if you're sitting down.
No, we just got on. Yeah. Well, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's awesome. Well-deserved. Yeah.
Hmm, that's great.
It's still early, so. Early on with the few actions. Yeah. Oh, so cute. This is all good. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we're a little early for the next item, the public hearing. That doesn't start till 7:00, so we're gonna move, we're gonna move on down to the action items. Andrew, is that good?
Sure. All right, first one, DPW Materials and Services bid. On May 1st, 2025, at 2:00 p.m., bids were received and opened for DPW Materials and Services. At your last meeting, you awarded three of the bids as recommended. For the asphalt milling and removal bid, Mass DOT had determined that the lowest bidder, A.F. Amarillo &amp; Son, did not meet the prequalification to bid on the item, therefore has recommended the bid be awarded to the next lowest bidder, which is Mass Broken Stone, for an amount not to exceed $2.74 per square yard. I'd recommend the board approve as requested.
I recommend the board approve as requested.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll open it up for a discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Next, Andrew. Do we want to do a point of appreciation? Or do we want to move down? That might go a little longer, but I don't want to be late for the appointment.
I'll let me get to the next one, then.
How about the, you can?
Whatever you want.
All right, so next we have the change of manager for Super Food Mart Inc. Attached is a, is an application for change of manager for Super Food Mart Inc., DBA Charlton Food Mart. All paperwork has been completed, and I would recommend the board approve the request.
I would recommend the board approve the request.
I would second that.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Next, Andrew. Do we want to do a point of appreciation? Or do we want to move down? That might go a little longer, but I don't want to be late for the appointment.
I'll let me get to the next one, then.
How about the, you can?
Whatever you want.
All right, so next we have the change of manager for Super Food Mart Inc. Attached is a, is an application for change of manager for Super Food Mart Inc., DBA Charlton Food Mart. All paperwork has been completed, and I would recommend the board approve the request.
I would recommend the board approve the request.
I would second that.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Next, Andrew. Do we want to start with your recommendation?
Employee Appreciation Day?
All right, in case anyone lost, you're lost, we are now under Action Items Number 2, and that would be Employee Appreciation Day. Big time and place. Vasha, I know you had wanted this on the agenda.
So previously, we had helped on the common, and I thought that was great, except that we had some library people being unhappy, and also I think that there wasn't, well, some comments made to the public that people thought that maybe, you know, we should all be celebrating while the Town Hall should be open, one of those things. So then we headed in the, at a Beagle Club. I thought that was great because of the weather, so you don't have to worry, be worried about the weather and stuff like that. The only thing that I have to say about that is that, my opinion, I don't want Andrew to be solely responsible for paying for food. And last year, we had, what was it, sandwiches, drinks? Well, the drinks were, everybody bought the drink, but there were sandwiches and some cookies and stuff, so I don't know what we can do about that.
And if we want to plan it offline, or just accept the date and time, and then do the rest of that stuff offline?
Because where is it? Wusok's? Wusok's is on Thursday. Why was it a Thursday?
21st.
Where was it?
21st.
21st.
Yeah, so we're looking at potentially the week before.
The week, right, so, yeah, because we, remember, we tried that on the same day two, three years back, and that was not working too well.
Right.
All right, so you're gonna run some dates for us?
Yeah, I would recommend that you set August 14th, and then we can figure out all the logistics offline.
Logistics? Oh, okay.
August 14th? You said August 14th?
Yep.
Okay.
I think that's important.
Any other comments about this? Thank you. Andrew, any other input?
No, we'll just, we can handle the rest of it offline.
Okay. We're just speeding along tonight. What did you, Town Administrator? You wanted your report?
No, do Dave's first, and then we'll get.
We can be late for the hearing?
Yeah.
All right, well, so we're next, well, we move down to Action Item Number 5. Consideration of Request from Selectman Sigrant.
What page is it, Andrew?
84, I think.
Yep. So I asked Andrew about this a while ago, about the letter. Ms. Rosky and I had a conversation outside. This brings us all the way to still trying to get the letter to see if the board wants to approve it, to send it to the school committee. The bonus for this goes back to early March. I went before the school committee and very respectful, polite, didn't hear what I wanted to hear, which I thought would have been the appropriate response. I left, left into their business, wasn't gonna make a scene, and then came before this board a few times to apprise this board of the requests I made before the school committee and to keep this board update on those efforts. That brings us here today. Since that time, however, I will point out for clarification, Selectman Sigrant is not going to apologize for standing up to bullies. Selectman Sigrant also doesn't make false accusations. He keeps evidence with dates and names. These are just two examples of the hate speech and misinformation being spread around by people. And by the way, note that I didn't mention anyone's name until about two and a half months of giving people opportunities to speak up, take a stand. And the only reason we're even here today is because no one had the backbone to do it. And I said at the last meeting, I'm not gonna let it go. So if I were to go back, I made some notes, and I'm gonna put them, so I can address them one by one, but I will point out that these, which Mr., also Andrew has, Mr. Golas, one, if you're gonna talk about freedom of speech and protected speech, you should know what it is. Incitement to commit violence against others or property damage, trespassing, and disobeying lawful orders is not freedom of speech. Spreading hate speech, which includes signs that are basically acknowledged worldwide as calls for genocide and murder, is not free speech. This is information that, by the way, that caused the state to put together the SCCA. That is the Committee to Combat Anti-Semitism Across the Commonwealth, the two co-chairs of which are both non-Jewish elected Democrats. They're the ones going after the MTA and all of this crap. So suffice it to say, when I talk about experiences by residents, you don't give their names Spreading hate speech, which includes signs that are basically acknowledged worldwide as calls for genocide and murder, is not free speech. This is information that, by the way, that caused the state to put together the SCCA. That is the Committee to Combat Anti-Semitism Across the Commonwealth, the two co-chairs of which are both non-Jewish elected Democrats. They're the ones going after the MTA and all of this crap. So suffice it to say, when I talk about experiences by residents, you don't give their names without their permission because it could be problematic and troublesome for them. Suffice it to say, I have had lots of interactions with the school committee and school administration over the years with previous administrations and faculties giving up because it never went anywhere. The events that I referred to were real, they happened. Those memes that are spread are hate speech. Now, it doesn't matter if you don't pull the trigger yourself. As far as I'm concerned, the people who spread that kind of hate, lies and propaganda have blood on their hands as if they pulled the trigger themselves. And that's what we're seeing. Because of those memes on social media, that is why a person drove from Chicago to Washington DC very recently to murder two innocent young people about to be engaged in cold blood because he just thought they were Jews. It is those same memes being spread on social media that caused the person in Colorado to throw homemade Molotov cocktails, I think this was just last week, into a group of peaceful protesters, tolling signs, which they've done every weekend for years, just saying release hostages. One of those burned was a former Holocaust survivor in their eighties. I don't know if any of them died, but there were a lot of critical injuries. This is happening all over the country, including right here in Massachusetts, which is why the Commonwealth set up the committee to fight it here. And I'm not going to be silent about this. It's not my job to police every person in town, every board. I've given everybody and every board ample opportunity to speak up. No one has. And that's why I've asked this board to please consider sending a letter to the school committee, asking them to take a stand. And part of this is because the MTA has just decided to double down on its lies and its propaganda and is gonna be hit again by the state. And because of that, it is important that we do take a stand, not just this board, but to me, the school committee, because that is the committee that is going to impact the lives of the children the way they think, what they're taught. And I would rather have our children be taught the truth rather than lies, propaganda, and revisionist history, which is exactly what the MTA has been putting out to school committees in the state of Massachusetts. And I have that documented as well, if anybody wants it.
So before, are you done? I didn't want to cut you off. So before I open this up for, for comments, I did want to just clarify, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. To be clear, when you stepped down, you stepped down, you, you were putting this request in as a citizen.
When I stepped down that time, yes, I was speaking as a citizen regarding elected officials and posts that were made online, which makes them now public posts. And I don't know if I referred to the previous request to send a letter or if that was more or less just an update. I don't remember that meeting word for word. But I may have requested the letter be sent then as well. I don't remember.
Madam Chair, if I can chime in, that was during public comment as well and that's why we asked at the time to make it an agenda item so we could have the discussion.
Yeah.
Since there's no discussion in the public comment.
And your ask, David, specifically?
My ask is to send the letter from our board, asking the school committee, I believe that just be the committee, not the superintendent, since he works for them, not the other way around. But to have the school committee actually take a vote and take a public stand, not only against hate, anti-Semitism, racism, bigotry, but they also would like to, I would also like to hear them stand not only against that, but that they publicly state they will not utilize those tools provided by the MTA, which have also now been called out by the state as hate speech and incorrect revisionist history. This is not what we should be teaching our children. And I'm asking the school committee to take a public stance that they will not stand for, use those materials, or allow hate in any shape or form in our school systems and that if it does occur, there will be accountability.
All right, so as the chair, I will remain, I will refrain from commenting till everyone else has commented. And I will also point out, it is within my authority to allow someone to speak. If there's anyone here who wants to speak on this, because it may pertain to you. So if you want to speak, just, I will acknowledge you. And with that said, I will open this up for a discussion.
Yeah. Madam Chair, right from the beginning of this, David, I, I'm completely on your side with, with the whole concept on, on fighting anti-Semitism or hate or for any, any religion, any, any race. I applaud your, your tenacity for sticking up to it. What I, and I'm glad this is finally before the board, we can discuss it so we can, because what I didn't like was the implication in the newspaper that our board was ignoring the topic.
I didn't write the article.
Yeah, I know. I, I know when newspapers get, I, I understand that. But we're here now doing what we should do, so let's deliberate and, yeah.
And honestly, this request was simply about a request to send a letter to the school committee, asking them to have deliberation and take action. And then we have to wait and see whether they will or whether they won't.
Now, I had heard, I thought I, or I might have heard it from you, that originally the MTA put that info out, then they retracted it, but now they put it back out again?
They're coming out. So basically, it was the, I think it's called the Select Committee Combating Anti-Semitism, it's SCCA. And that it was put together by the state to combat anti-Semitism across the Commonwealth. They were the ones that originally went after the MTA hardcore and still are. And the backlash from the public, as well as the State House, I'm told they did take it down. I don't have access to their website. I can't verify it.
Oh, it's a login.
Right, it's, it's protected login.
Yeah.
So I'm told it was supposedly taken down. And now they've come back out in an attempt to attack the SCCA. The state committee charged with combating anti-Semitism that called them out and showed all the lies and half-truths and revisionist history. And now they're trying to attack the SCCA and everyone in the Commonwealth who may call them out on it, which I found that anytime you call out someone who is racist or anti-Semitic, they will always be very loud and vocal to try and shout you down. And that's exactly what the MTA is now trying to do to the SCCA and every other person in the state who's speaking out against them, trying to shut them up.
Okay.
Did you have something to say, Steve?
I would just make the motion that we send the letter as draft written to the, the school committee.
Would you like me to read the letter?
I think we should probably should.
It's up to you.
I have something to say too, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. So I side with, with David on this as well, from the beginning to the end. As Steve, I didn't really appreciate how, you know, long it took to get to exactly where we are right now. This is formal, this is up in the, in the public. I have absolutely no problem signing that letter at all. Me being me, coming from a different country and coming from situations that are similar to this one that is happening right now, I can tell you right now that the rise of the anti-Semitism in this country is, at, at best, it's at least alarming.
Yeah.
And I, if I can feel it, coming from the communistic regime, trust me, it's, it's here. And I know that what David was trying to present to us was this, this, this three moving parts. That's my understanding. The first part was the schools having the lock-in. So there was a materials that they were trying to push for the teachers to use in the classrooms to, to explain different, different topics that are happening right now. So that's my understanding. The second part of all of this was a, a children of different schools coming in, complaining about, you know, all this experience, experience that firsthand. And the third thing was the, uh, school committee members, or the member for that matter, publicizing certain things on the private, on the private platform, if you wish. I have, to, to the first two moving parts, whatever you say, I agree with everything you have said. There's, there's no place in this town for any of it whatsoever. As to the, the Facebook postings, for whoever knows me well enough, I'm not participating in any of it, and there's a reason for it, and that's one of those reasons. Main reason is we have to understand that even so, we have our public websites or our social media platforms and then we have our private, what we think is private platforms or social media outlets. We don't have that luxury. We are public figures no matter what. So that's number one. And to, to say that everybody should be aware and differentiate between the two is, is just, is, is just not the way it should be. I think that any appointed or elected person that is representing this town or this residence altogether should realize above it all that we should be held up to the much higher standards than, than anybody else. We do represent people or children of, of this town. So I, I'm so disappointed, I'm so disappointed that, that everything that's going on in this country, aside of our town, is being brought up and put right in the middle of, like was said today, already emotionally unstable environment. We don't need that, that emotionally unstable environment to be brought in to our schools. When we starting to attack the, the youngest and the most fragile and pure minds of this country, that will be our future generation, I have no idea who would be standing there not protecting them. So please refrain. If you have any political agenda and you are representing people and children of this town, just refrain. You are not, you don't have that luxury. That is just that simple. People are following us, no matter what you think. They, they are looking, especially after everything that happened in schools, you know, a couple of years back. Everybody is and should be scrutinized and, and, and we all should be, you know, held up to the higher standards. So, so just please keep that in mind, that's all I'm gonna say. And I will, by all means, sign that letter and I expect somebody to do something about it. Either it's gonna be a statement, anything. I would like to, I, I would like for that to, to happen. And I will not stop as well, until something is done.
If I may, the reason I wanted to read the letter was...
Just point of water. Just, can we have a second? Because I never got the second for the discussion that we're having. My bad.
I made the motion.
You made the motion? Second? All right, we'll continue discussion.
The reason I suggested reading the letter, Madam Chair, was simply so that the audience at home will know, the letter was never about any individual or a person and it still isn't. And it, and the only thing I would say is what's sad about this is that had the school committee taken an action back in March, which everyone I spoke to said that was the no-brainer, it never would have gone past that day. And every other opportunity that they've had, couldn't I put the bed so easily? But people don't have the courage to lead, so this is why we're here. And I would happy to read it, if you want to read it, or Andrew.
No, I think you should read it and then I'm, I have a few comments.
Thank you. So the letter reads, if the board would humor me, I need glasses for this. "For Superintendent Lamarche and members of the Dudley Charlton School Committee, at the select board meetings on March 25th, April 8th, and May 27th, it was expressed by Selectman Singer his concerns regarding recent social media posts and member resources provided by the Massachusetts Teachers Association, which promoted materials concerning the Israel Hamas war. The specific concern was the materials being promoted reflected position of anti-Semitism as it relates to this conflict." "In response to Act for Selectman Singer's comments, we ask that the superintendent and school committee take a public stance against anti-Semitism, bigotry, and racism by stating publicly that it will not be taught or tolerated in any way, shape, or form within the Dudley Charlton Regional School District. In late February, the Massachusetts Teachers Association released a statement that it would remove objectionable materials included in an online educational resource following concerns over anti-Semitism raised at February 10th legislative hearing of a special commission on combating anti-Semitism." That's the SCCA. "As the Dudley Charlton Regional School District Teachers Union is a member of this broader association of teachers unions, we recognize that the members of the teaching community may have used or distributed these materials within the classroom and through social media which do not align with the core values and beliefs of the community regarding anti-Semitism, bigotry, and racism. Lack of a response to condemn these messages has led to an escalation in hateful acts in the community. In response to the actions to condemn, to condemn these depictions, we ask that the superintendent and school committee prepare and release a public statement condemning the distribution of these materials, refuse to reutilize materials provided by the MTA related to the Middle East conflict, and reiterate that the Dudley Charlton School District is no place for hate. We thank you for considering taking strong and decisive actions in response to this situation sincerely, this board." And I think that clearly states that, at least to myself and many others, it was a very simple request that should have been an easy yes. But we are here today and I'm asking you to ask the committee to take action.
Before I speak, Ms. Costello, did you have something to say?
Yeah. So at the meeting that David Singer showed up to and was at public comment and asked those questions about the MTA materials, the superintendent did state that the teachers don't use the MTA materials and that we have independent teachers. And the other part is more along with the lines of whether or not we stand for no place for hate, is that every year, and also updating policies as needed to correlate with the law and how we are as the district, is that every year we also go over the staff and student handbooks and pledge on, on, on those student handbooks that we are a no place for hate and that we have non-discrimination policies across the board.
Thank you.
So can I respond to that then?
Actually, I have a question.
So at that meeting, when I did go to the superintendent, and it's on television, I assume, so you can watch it yourself.
I did.
You will see, then play it back, play it back. It's my turn to answer, Madam Chair. You will see that the superintendent actually, the actual response was that it wasn't needed. His actual words, "It's not needed." Not that they don't use, but that they're independent-thinking teachers. There was never a statement that they won't, that they aren't, but simply that they're independent-minded. They don't necessarily use them, but they're independent-minded teachers and literally it was that he said that this action was not needed. That's number one. Number two, as far as the pledge that they apparently take, it would be nice then if they did it publicly for the entire community and this board and everyone else to know as well, which is again, not a very big ask.
Pete, Mr. Lancet, Selectman Singer.
Madam Chair, Ms. Costello originally showed up for public comment as a private citizen. Now we're asking her to comment for the school committee, which I don't feel is appropriate. I think they need to have deliberation and come up with a unified response, not just Ms. Costello's response to this. So I, I, I make a motion to move on this.
I, I understand, but you did have something to say and I will hear it. Did you have something to add?
Can I respond to Mr. Lancet?
Okay.
Is that right now you're all taking his word on what the MTA is or is not doing it? I mean, none of you have memberships of the MTA. I don't have memberships of the MTA. And he was able to do so as public comment private citizen who is now, you know, at the board. So I'm just, all I'm saying is that your statement on the fact that you can look this up on the district website and that it's always in the staff handbooks. We always go through the resolution right in August when we, when we approve the staff handbooks and the staff resource for that year.
So what, now my turn.
Let's just say I'm happy to provide you, Madam Chair, with the information from the MTA that she's claiming I'm just stating just like this. I can provide you with all the screenshots and what they disseminated.
So this is, with all due respect to my peers and everyone here, I personally think or feel that we're acting out of our scope of authority. I think if you look at the org chart, we are, we are in a, the school committee, right? Autonomous board from us. That doesn't mean we can't make suggestions, but I would like to know how we would feel if we received such a letter. I also, and you all know me, where I stand, and I walked in today, looked up, and there was the no room, no room for hate sign. We act, we have a certain code of conduct, the school committee. I'm a former school committee member for ten years. I know exactly what Mrs. Costello was talking about. Why then, I guess, are we almost demanding that they take action? Again, I think we're walking that fine line and so you pointed out very eloquently, I might add, Masha, that the two things happening here, we have, and what really bothers, and again, this is my personal opinion, about a personal Facebook page of a public official personal. And I do respectfully disagree with this, with the summary of, I, I do think we all have to be held to a certain standard, but your personal Facebook page, and I did some research on this and it actually said that taking action based solely on a personal social media post is a misapplication of our authority and it could be problematic from a legal and ethical standpoint. So one thing I will say, if we choose to move forward with any kind of letter, I would request that this definitely go by our legal counsel. So again, personal, and then when we talked about the, the requests and your concerns with the MTA, once again, looking at the escalation, right, where you started, where you started.
Oh, yeah. I'm ready to address that and your three comments as well.
First you respond, or you, the natural thing would be to reach out to the person and then you could report it to Facebook, you can do an ethics thing. There's many things you can do.
Have you paid attention, Madam Chair?
Yes, I have.
Because this isn't about a person.
Well...
In fact, it started with the school committee and the MTA. It was never about an individual. It's about the school committee and the MTA.
But you brought in a name.
Number two, it's not out of our wheelhouse. You are elected to be a leader of the community. This is literally in your wheelhouse. That's number two.
I was, I'm, David, Mr. I was, I was, I...
You're making false statements.
I was not. I was not done. Let me, let me finish. I gave you the, the opportunity to, to finish.
I didn't make false statements. Go ahead.
I, nor did I.
You just did.
I, I am simply saying that if the shoe was on the other foot, right, I personally would be more in favor of inviting not only Dudley Charlton, but Bay Path and us to come out with a mutual letter, with language that we all agree upon, that we can all get behind. Because I'm worried about setting a precedent, so, I mean, there's no room for hate, period. Someone might come before us and say, you know, my, my son or daughter who's a special needs student has been, you know, bullied, or, or, fill in the blank. And then what are we to do? Right? I mean, this, it's, it's a given, so, anyway.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, again, one, so, that's a falsehood. It was never about an individual, and I'm happy to, to have legal look at it, because you actually proved my point. This was about the MTA and the school committee.
At the last meeting, you dragged, you mentioned a name and you pointed out, and that's very-
I did mention a name.
Okay.
But let's see, you have been here, I believe you've been following this along.
Yes.
This started out with me going to the school committee. That started with me coming here, talking about the school committee. With me coming here again. Every time, it was about the school committee. The last time, I gave an example of why we need this from the school committee, because a member of the school committee put out this crap.
On her personal page?
On her Facebook page, which, once you put it out on Facebook page, it is out in the public realm. It is no longer protected, number one. Number two, it's an elected official. This is a call for genocide. This is not freedom of speech, quite the opposite. And I will provide the stuff that the MTA, by the way, has delivered to all the people in Boston, all the legislative mailboxes. I have copies of it. So just like I have the documents of what you spread, I have what the MTA has done. This is about the school committee. I'm happy, have the lawyers come at us. That's fine. As far as how would we feel if the shoe was on the other foot? Ms. Chair, Madam Chair, you've been on this board before. You've been on this board, and you know darn well that this board has received many complaints or letters or requests from other boards, and we always take it with, thank you, we'll take it under consideration. Number three, I might even be a number four. This board is not demanding the school committee take action. The letter is a request. The school committee is a duly-elected board, which we all know. They will take it, they will deliberate on it, they will decide whether to take action or not. No one is demanding anything. We are simply making a request.
But you, you already went before them, and-
Correct.
And now you're here using the board-
And that's why I'm asking this board to make a request.
To make it more formal.
Correct. Because I can't speak for the board. I can only speak for myself.
As I said, I think, I, I could get behind a more unified letter with, with, including Bay Path, instead of, it, the perception, and if I'm perceiving it this way, others may as well, is we're trying to strong-arm another board into doing something because of your request. And I don't, I just think we're not going about it the right way.
Last one. I've never heard that from anybody but you so far.
We're, we're overstepping, that's all. But, okay, Pete?
Madam Chair, I, I've spent years in the Middle East in unfavorable conditions, and, you know, the escalation of violence over there is much different, and to see that come back to the states, you know, whether it's just a sharing of a post or something, it's gonna grow. So, you know, it's in the news, it's everywhere, so not only covering it in annual policies is enough, I think we need, you know, as a board, we need to make a statement, and I think we need to ask other boards within, within the town or within the district, you know, to get on board and make a statement as well. I, I just don't think that we can tolerate this. That's, that's my perspective. I mean, we can go back and forth all night, we have a motion and a second on the table. You know, I would motion to move for a vote.
I, my, my, Madam, my understanding is this letter is not to, it's, it's above it all to formally start the conversation. It doesn't, we, we're just demanding some kind of a, a attention, because we, you know, this is how we're rising, I, my dissatisfaction, I speak for myself, and the worrisome of what's going on, so, but it doesn't mean that we wanna, you know, tell anybody what to do, we just, we just, this is the first step of us trying to bring it on the table because we just worry it.
Did you have something?
I, I happen to think that, that the letter, the letter is certainly not demanding, it is asking. And it doesn't mention anybody by name. Now, the, the background certainly does, but that's irrelevant. This is, this is what they're going to read officially, and, and the vote we're about to take would be more of an official vote. I don't think, I can't see where legal would have a problem with this.
Are we in agreement, we approve something like this if it passes through legal?
I'm good with that.
I got no problem with that.
Neither. Yeah. And I would ask the town administrator, do you have any comments before we move on?
I don't.
I don't know if that's really necessary.
No.
Oh, I agree, but I, I'm happy to, actually, yes, at this point, I'm seeing a lot of efforts to distract and, and get us off course and off tangent, so, at this point, whatever, if it has to go to legal to say this is ridiculous-
Andrew, how long's that take? That's fast, right?
It'll be a-
Do you want the lawyer, or do you want to ask, continue to promulgate?
Yeah, okay. So, okay, so let's, let's, let's move the motion. So I move to approve the letter to be sent to the school committee, conditional to the-
Any objections?
Any objections from the town council.
So it's an amendment to my motion.
Amendment, oh, yeah.
Sorry. Amendment to your motion.
All right.
I'll second that.
Any other conversation? And I, and I was just safe, for the record, I just can't get behind it, not because I don't believe in what you're talking about, but the process in which that led us here to this point in time. It's all about the process for me.
I don't think it's, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think there's any harm in it. If, if, if they sent us a letter like that, maybe we deserved it too.
I would point out-
We have to have thicker skin than that, this kind of-
Yeah, and I would just say, it's just my opinion that this has nothing to do with process, that, to me, process is an excuse. This, this is the proper process. This board has had a discussion, there was a motion, there was a second, people can vote for it, they can vote against it. This is the actual proper process. We are sending a request for consideration. They are a deluded board, they will make their decision, yes or no. This is the process. So, it's very clear where people stand. We have our motions.
All right. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Chair's opposed? Four ayes, one oppose.
That was on the amendment?
Yes.
As it was-
That was, was as amended. Yeah. All right. Where are we?
Seven o'clock. Request for removal of property from Chapter 61B, Gould Road, 10C, 2.10 attaches a request from Francis A. Nero Esquire on behalf of St. Mark's Coptic Orthodox Church of Boston, requesting to remove from Chapter 61B approximately 1.53 acres of land as shown on Assessor's map, 10 block C, lot 2.10, located off Gould Road and Cemetery Road. The Plating Board, Board of Assessors, Conservation Commission, and Water Sewer Commission have all reviewed the request and have no objection to the town of Charlton choosing not to exercise their right of first refusal for this request. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the attached public hearing notice. I'd recommend the board not exercise its right of first refusal of the property.
Would you like me to read the request, or the public hearing?
No, I got it, I got it. So, public hearing. Please be advised that the Charlton Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Charlton Town Hall, meeting room 1, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass., 01507, to act on the request by Francis A. Nero Esquire on behalf of St. Mark's Coptic Orthodox Church of Boston to remove from Chapter 61B approximately 1.53 acres of land as shown on the Assessor's map, 10 block C, lot 210, located off of Gould Road and Cemetery Road. Anyone interested should appear at the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing. Do we have the applicant here? Meeting is, public hearing's open? No applicant, and?
No comments.
No comments?
No comment writing, yeah.
All right, vote and close it.
Yep. Vote to close and vote-
Close and vote.
Vote to close the public hearing and then a vote to-
All right.
Not exercise.
So we vote to close the public hearing? Can I have a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second, second. Okay, discussion. None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes. And now, we'll have the vote to-
Motion to not exercise our first right of refusal on the 61B.
Second. All right. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. No, no. I know. What's next, Eric?
Sounds good.
All right, Andrew's up. Andrew, take it away.
All right, so we got the current positions that are open, seeking people to fill. Equipment operator for the highway department, a digital skills instructor for the library, which is a part-time, grant-funded position, a kitchen coordinator, part-time for the Council on Aging, and assistant library director, head of youth services. All of these employment opportunities are available on the town of Charlton's website at www.talentcharlton.net/jobs. Currently, we have the following positions that are open for committees. The Housing Production Plan Steering Committee, Activities Council, Band Shell Development Committee, Conservation Commission, Alternate Cultural Council, Historical Commission, WRTA Advisory Board, and Zoning Board of Appeals, Alternate. If you're interested, send a talent back to our office, we'll get you on. As far as projects, fire substations, so we have blasting work commencing over the last week, and they've been very well managed and uneventful. I just want to thank the schools and the butters to the project for working with us through that process. Just as a reminder, we do have the groundbreaking event on Wednesday, June 18th, at 4 o'clock at the site. As far as the number two schoolhouse, Carver Architectural Sheet Metal has completed the structural reinforcement of the roof trusses and is nearing completion of the state roof, so we're getting close to being able to call that project complete. Other than that, DPW is in the process of doing preliminary construction in preparation of repaving Rams Farm Road next month, so we appreciate the patience and cooperation[1695.04]